I think Don is the last one. Okay, it's about two minutes to six. Do you want to wait two more minutes before we get started?
Do we have?
Connie, is that flashing in your upper left corner? I see recording, but it's flashing live streaming.
Yeah, I hit record and then I hit livestream, but it's not livestreaming.
Mine's beeping like that, too. Yeah, I've got the same thing going on.
Yeah, it's breaking up.
Do you want me to stop record or can I do that?
Hi, George.
Hello, Robert.
Long time no see.
You must have made it home okay last night.
Oh, yeah, it was pretty dark out when I got home. Aaron, I've got some of your signs.
Thank you.
That'll be $10 apiece.
You can throw them out.
Hey, I think we have everybody right now.
Connie, did you stop the live stream?
There we go.
I didn't stop livestream.
Stop the livestream. I don't think the connection went through.
Okay.
Hey, Aaron, thank you for posting that news today. It's a hard way to find out about it.
I was so sad. You know how many times I saw him in concert? I can't even tell you.
So it is now 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty. Justice for all. At this time, we'd like to have the Administration oath of office to the newly elected board members. Ms. Gibson?
Yes, Terry Kruger, Erin McDonald, and Mike Marizio. I need you to read your Oaths of Office.
Ready?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, Terri Kruger, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the North Syracuse Central School District to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Krabs.
Yes, if you could just sign your Oaths of Office, please.
So then at this time, we'd like to move to the next item, which is the election of Board of Education Officers.
Can I nominate? Can I nominate Paul Farfalia for president?
I'll second that. You, Connie, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have an election of a president. Do we need for vice president?
I nominate Mike Marizio for vice president.
And I second that.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have that, Connie?
I do. And so if Mike and Paul would please pull their Oaths of Office out and read your oath of office.
Okay.
I, Paul Farfalia, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge duties as Board President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District to the best of my ability.
Thank you. If you could both sign those.
Okay.
And return those to me. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like number four on here is appoint the Board of Education Audit Committee?
Yep, and at this point, I believe Mr. Farfalia resumes taking over the meeting.
Yes, and so I would ask for a motion to put number four, the appointment of the Board of Education Audit Committee, before us. Motion from Mr. Herman, second from Mr. Harrington. And on that, we do have the President and Vice President, and we're continuing with Michael Shuseda as a community member. Any questions on that?
No.
No.
Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Yeah, I've done some grouping, but not everything is grouped because I want to make sure everybody knows what's before them, but... So I'd like to take item number two or 5.02, the appointment of district clerk. And I'd like to take, I mean, sorry, the district treasurer and deputy treasurer. I'd like to take that one alone if I can get a motion. Motion from Aaron, second from Mark Thorne. Any discussion on that?
No.
Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opposed, that is carried. I'd like to take 5.02, the appointment of district clerk, if I can get a motion, put that before us. Motion from Erin McDonald, second from Mary Scanlon. That is before us. I want to make sure that we did this one alone because I think we have a gem in Connie Gibson, and I hope we have her as long as I'm around.
Thank you.
All in favor? Opposed, that is carried unanimously, of course. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
If I could get a motion, I would propose that we take 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5 together, and then I will talk about what they are. I get a motion that Erin, motion from Erin, second from Terry. And we're appointing the claims auditor and deputy claims auditor and the central treasurer. Both of those come with an establishment of a bond. And we're also appointing in 5.5, the student account manager. Do we have any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none. All in favor? And raise would be good. Opposed, those items are carried. Excuse me. All right, if I could get a motion, I would propose we take 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 together. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Mr. Herman. Six, the appointment of the data security and privacy officer, that's Dr. Leahy. Seven is the civil service personnel officer, that's Mr. Nephew. Five eight, the compliance officer for 504 is Mr. Florio. The Medicaid officer at 5.9 is Mr. Keegan. And if you saw the list for the DASSA coordinators, we have Building and Men's, and we have Lisa Goldberg overseeing that. So any questions on those items that are before you or any discussion? Seeing none, raise a hands, please. All in favor? Opposed, those are carried. 5.11, we are appointing our attorneys of record. If I get a motion for that before us, a motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. And those are Bonchannick and King, trespasser Mark Rock for our bond counsel, Alero and Fisher for construction and so on, and Brian Fiorenza. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Hey, moving right along. We could take 5.12, 5.13, and 5.14 together with a motion for that, if I could. A motion from Ms. McDonald, second from Mr. Thorne. 5.12 is the appointment of our architect, King and King. 5.13 is our external and internal auditors. We have external grossman in St. Amore and Archangel and Company as our internal. And 5.14, appointment of fiscal advisors as our municipal advisor. Any discussion on those pieces? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried unanimously. 5.15, 16, 17, and 18, again, our appointments. If I could have a motion to take those four together, motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. We are appointing our insurance plan administrators. Dame Kasuf and Karen Beck. And 5.16, our 403B and 457B plant administrators, which will be the district treasurer in conjunction with Omni, if I understood that correctly. And 5.17, appointment of school physicians with associated fees that you can see there. And 5.18, advisors to activity funds for the high school, junior high, and for the middle school. Any discussion? I did have one question on one item. Just that we have a name on here who also we accepted a resignation for last meeting. Is that going to be... We would need to amend that, I'm assuming?
We would need to adjust that, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on those four items? All in favor? Opposed, those are carried. Item 5.19, appointments to the district committees on exceptional student education. I can get a motion to put that before us separately. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. McDonald. And this is a CSE building-based and district special ed and preschool that we are pointing here. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. If I get a motion, I propose we take 5.20 through 24. Are those appointments as a group? If I get a motion? A motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. 5.20, we're appointing the impartial hearing officers. 5.21, district health and safety committee. 5.22, our fire inspector. 5.23, the AHRRA compliance officer, and 5.24, chief emergency officer. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, those are also carried. Ms. Gibson? 5.25, I get a motion to put the use of facilities proposal for 2021 in these before us. A motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion?
I actually do have a question on that, and there are additional costs associated with what's going on. Do we need to adjust those fees? Is it going to cost the district more because of the cleaning requirements?
At this time, we're not aware of any additional costs because of the our cleaning standards. Currently, we use a thing called Cleaning for Health that meets CDC standards and is effective in killing coronavirus. It's unless, if it gets to the point where facilities need to be cleaned more frequently than daily or after each use, we might have to revisit not making our facilities available. But I think at this stage of the game, we're comfortable leaving the fees the way they are. Again, down the road, this is such a changing world we live in, we may have to revisit who we let use our facilities and the costs, but right now, we just didn't have enough information to make a good recommendation otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Right, designation 6.1, regular meetings of the Board of Education listed before us. Could I get a motion listed there? A motion there, a motion from Mr. Marizio, second from McDonald. You can see all those meetings listed there. We have two every month, including May this year, which is changed after a few years. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, sorry. Opposed, those are carried. Take 6.2 and 6.3 together. If I can get a motion, a motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Scanlon. These are the various things we use for depositories and our official newspaper. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, none. That is carried. And our authorizations. If I get a motion, I would take 7.1 through 9 altogether. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorne. Our authorization is involving payroll and who certifies it, purchasing agent, Karen Beck, budget transfers, electronic signature, the district treasurer, staff conferences, and approval. Establishment of petty cash funds, instructional contracts, cash advances, and board conferences. Those are all in those authorizations, 7, 1, 3, 9. Any discussion on any item there? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed or abstain? That is carried. And this one is specially for Ms. Scanlon. We're going to do a reduction of all Board of Education policies if I get a motion for that. Motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. McDonald. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. All I need at this time, that is a motion to adjourn the reorganization, excuse me, reorganizational meeting of 2021. Motion from Ms. McDonald, second from Mr. Marizio. All in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned. So I will meet you, well, we're not going anywhere, but I'll switch over to another agenda. We're all prepared. I will call this meeting to order. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Education of North Syracuse Central School District to order on July 6, 2020. I believe in the past, since we've done the pledge once, we don't need to redo it unless somebody would like to. We're good? Okay. I'll make sure we're all good on that. With that, then I would begin, as we do typically with our moment of silence. And today's moment of silence is for Douglas Fairman, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. And we have a presentation today. We have a food service presentation. Wendy's been with us waiting patiently, so Wendy, I'm going to turn it over to you as soon as you're ready.
Okay.
I'm going to do the, I'm going to share my screen so you folks can see Wendy's presentation. So just bear with me one second as I bring up the presentation.
I forced Don into that because I don't know how to do both.
All right, can you folks see that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. And Wendy, could I advance to the next slide?
Sure. I'd just like to take a second to thank you guys for letting me always barge in on your board meeting, your reorg meeting. And we just, Don and I created a presentation just to kind of let you know what went on this year and kind of how we closed out the year with COVID being such a nightmare for us. So the next slide will show you year after year our meal counts, and we really started out this year strong. Our breakfast numbers grew quite a bit, as you can see, even with the impact of COVID from March on. But because of COVID, our lunch counts really kind of took a dive. One of the reasons that our meal counts grew at the beginning of the school year is, if you remember, last year, we talked a little bit about the CEP program, which is the Community Eligibility Provision Program, and we were able to feed students in a number of our buildings for free, so that really helped the student participation grow. Why don't we progress to the next slide and we'll talk a little bit more about CEP? So basically, what the Community Eligibility Provision does for us is that if a school building has more than 40% of the students in the building that qualify for free meals based on Medicaid, TANF, or SNAP, we can use that percentage to apply for this CEP program, allowing all students, whether they qualify for free or not, or whether they have a paper application using income. We're allowed to feed all students for free. So the four schools that we were allowed to enroll in this program were Main Street, Roxborough Elementary, Rox Middle, and then the BOSI's campus, which we have a contract with to feed. Next slide. And basically, how the CEP program works is that we submit a list of students that are that have the Medicaid, SNAP, or TANF to the state education department. They cross-reference those lists of students to make sure they're actually enrolled in our district. And what that does for us is that gives us a percentage of students that are allowed to be claimed as free. So in our case, based on the numbers that we submitted to State Ed, we were allowed to offer of the, of 100 meals served, 81% of those meals would be claimed at free. 19% of those meals would be claimed at paid. What we're always trying to strive for is to get a building up to 62% directly certified, which is that Medicaid, TANF, or SNAP number. And if we can get to that magical 62%, we would be 100% free, but we're not quite there yet. We're always searching these kids out in our database, trying to find those kids that might have slipped through the cracks. Or when we do our massive downloads from the state, we have a hard time with kids with the name Junior or the third. They, for some reason, those names don't carry into our system. So we do go through and look up students one at a time if need be. But as you can see from the slide, if basically, the free reimbursement rate is $1.90, which we're getting 81% of those meals back at $1.90, and then the free lunch rate is $3.54. You can see the paid rate is much lower, 31 and 45. So what this program does for us is, obviously, it offers everybody free meals, but we're hoping we have a high enough participation rate that that loss in revenue from those students not having to pay for meals is compensated by so many kids with this free reimbursement rate. That's very confusing, sorry. And I just wanted to show you on this next slide, basically, what our meal counts look like in 1819 and 1920. So we're looking at pre-CEP versus CEP, and I picked Roxborough Elementary. I didn't want to overload you with a slide for each building, but as you can see, just looking at our breakfast numbers in the lighter blue, those are 1819 meal counts per month. And you can see the huge growth in breakfast at Roxborough Elementary. I believe we saw an average of about between 68 and 78 students per day above our normal taking part in this free breakfast program. And then when we move over to the lunch program, our numbers still grew. They weren't as dramatic as you would see at breakfast, and I think a big part of that is we were feeding a good portion of our students at lunchtime anyway. It was breakfast that we were always trying to struggle to get our numbers up and really go after those students that were qualified for the benefits but just weren't using them. But with the help of our principals, they were excellent in helping us institute this CEP program, especially at breakfast time, because I won't lie, it was mass chaos the first week. I thought maybe they want to harm me in some way, but they were very helpful in coming up with creative ideas on how we could get these kids through the line fast. Sending some kids to the classroom. We were having kindergartners, for example, at Roxborough go to their classroom, and then they, all kindergarten classes actually came back and ate breakfast in the cafeteria after everybody else had passed through the serving line, so they were extremely helpful. And I think it's been a great benefit to the students.
I have a quick question on that graph, Wendy?
Yeah, sure.
Just, I'm guessing the spike that I'm seeing in October both years, that just a lag with the applications coming in, or?
Um, no, it's it's just a fluke. October, it depends on the number of days in the month, so you could see the differences like that for that reason.
I think so. I think that's exactly it, the days in the month. And we all also see in the month of September that even as, it took a little while. This was our first year of CEP. It took a little while for everybody to figure out what was going on and that they were eligible for this premium.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense.
So I just wanted to show you overall in the district, a glance at our meal counts for the year. And really, what this is showing us is, in blue, the breakfast and lunch, or breakfast counts comparing months. And then in the green, we're looking at 1819 versus 1920 meal counts. But what I really wanted to show you was the impact of COVID when March hit. You can see the dramatic change in our meal counts. And obviously, that took a big financial toll on our program, especially since we worked very hard with Mr. Keegan's help to keep all of our staff employed during that time. So one of the things we were able to do when we kind of suspected that COVID was going to be shutting down school buildings is that we applied for a waiver with the state education department to offer our meals under the summer, the seamless summer option, or basically our summer feeding program instead of the national school lunch program. And what this allowed us to do was to receive a higher reimbursement rate. So this really saved us financially. So in comparison, if we were operating under the national school lunch program throughout this COVID crisis, we would have been receiving $1.94 and $3.54 respective for breakfast and lunch. But because we were able to receive that waiver, we were receiving $2.30 for breakfast and $4.03 for lunch. So you can see the dramatic difference in how that really helped us compensate for that big financial loss of no à la carte sales and having to maintain our full staff. One of the things that Mr. Keegan and I are constantly talking about is is, are the issues that we face around collecting bad debt from negative balances for students buying breakfast and lunch and not paying for them. This is one of the nice things about CEP, so we don't collect, we're obviously not collecting money, so we don't have the bad debt that we do in some of our other buildings. But as you know, we had to have a policy in place, and we are not allowed to, obviously, never want to shame students in line, but we had to find alternative methods to be contacting parents and not really saying anything to students about their negative debt. So we've used school messenger. Mr. Keegan's helped us send out letters. We send out letters. I make phone calls. And it's really becoming an issue that I know the business officials in the superintendents across the state are talking about. What do we do with this bad debt? We're not allowed to use debt collectors, the state's telling us, so we can't use that method. But as you can see, year after year, our our bad debt is growing, and the only reason that this year we had $25,000 in bad debt is due to COVID. We weren't collecting, they weren't building up a bigger negative balance. And in the 1920s school year, I just put a little note here, of that $25,000, $20,000, $20,633 of that was from paid students. And that might be a little confusing. You're saying why is $5,000 of that from free or reduced students? These are typically, this negative balance is a buildup of parents that might not be turning their paper applications in in time to receive free or reduced price meals. So there's that lag time where we're trying to contact them and say, hey, we need your paperwork again for this year. And during about a five, six-week period, we built up about $5,000 in debt.
We're not allowed to go back and bill for reimbursement.
Correct. I have to bill, I actually have to bill the general fund for this at the end of the school year.
So we've worked really hard, as Wendy said, on a collection process that conforms with the anti-shaming guidelines, and I have to confess, it's been relatively ineffective. And so we're really struggling with it, and it's a challenge, and this was a hit to the general fund of $25,000 that would have more likely been closer to 50 had we not had the COVID.
The other, we really, while our breakfast numbers and lunch numbers really started off with a bang this year, we also had some major issues with equipment. off with a bang this year, we also had some major issues with equipment repairs. I know every year I stick a slide in my presentation talking about how our equipment is aging, but we just had the worst end of a summer that we could possibly have. We had major compressor failures for walk-in coolers. We had to have a crane come in and put a new compressor up on the roof of the junior high school. We used Roxborough Middle School all summer long for summer feeding, and everything was fine. They come in for the first day of school and our main oven doesn't work, and that was that $18,000 purchase. And then, not too long after that, one of our main ovens upstairs in the high school on our busiest serving line failed. So we had some major expenses this year, and while we're constantly trying to maintain our equipment and even have them come in just to do little checks before things really break down and fail, we're just struggling. So I, you know, with this Bear Road project, I'm happy that we're going to have a school with all brand-new equipment in there. The only problem is that they don't build equipment like they did back in the 70s and 80s. Let's just hope this lasts for a while. So based on how we started the year and with COVID impacting our program, I believe one of the previous slides, I think we had around $170,000 in lost state aid. So we are estimating that, and numbers are still coming in daily, but we're estimating about a $50,000 loss this year, after all of that, those equipment expenses and the impact of COVID, which, all in all, after what we've been through, really isn't that bad.
It's a lot better than Wendy and I expected.
Yeah. Yep. So this is the slide, Mr. Crabtree, that you love. And basically, we're mandated by the State Education Department and the USDA to increase our lunch prices every year. And basically, there's a formula for that, and what they're trying to do is, is make sure that those paid students are paying their fair share to support the food service program. And basically, what they do is they look at the free reimbursement rate and the paid reimbursement rate, and we have to be at or above that level. So when Don and I ran the numbers, the calculator said that we really needed to increase prices this year by 11 cents to keep up with the weighted average of our sales. We were at $2.64, and we really should be at $3.09. So the state tells us the minimum increase that we can have is 5 cents, no matter what, but we are looking for 10 cent increase this year. But with that being said, let me tell you a little bit about what's going on in the school lunch bid world. We've had major issues with vendors. I don't, probably a lot of you know that the Upstate Milk Cooperative purchased part of Burn Dairy. So we are down to only one vendor that participates in our milk bid, and our bids just came in, and we are looking at a 5 cent increase in milk per carton for next year. And we have lost our, we had Deli Boy, I don't know if you guys ever see the trucks, but they used to bid quite heavily on our meat and bread bids. They are no longer bidding on our products, so we are really down to one vendor for our grocery, meat and bread, and then we only have one ice cream company. So when we opened the bids just a week ago, we saw a huge spike in costs. For example, our cereal, our little one-ounce cereal bowl packs that we give the kids, the General Mills brand is going up 17 cents per unit.
Oh, boy.
And it just gets worse from there. I was, you know, I was pricing out stuff today, and it's 5 cents here, 7 cents there, you know, 17 cents for the cereal and 5 cents for milk, well, that's much more than 10 cents. And I don't want to go any higher, because I really don't want to scare off any of the students or families that, you know, would be paying for meals, but I do think just to even survive or try to keep our head above water, we're going to need to have a 10 cent increase this year. And then I just wanted to show you guys, I'm so proud of my staff for what they did with COVID this year. We couldn't have done it, though, without the bus garage, without maintenance. Poor Darren helped us clean out every freezer and drag that food to the two facilities we were using to prep meals. And this little shirt that the girls are all wearing, one of my staff made those shirts for everybody, and we had a picture day, and, and they really enjoyed seeing the kids. The kids would come up and grab the meals, and we served quite a few meals. It was quite an impressive operation that we threw together pretty quickly. And like I said, I couldn't have done it without the help of everybody in the district.
I just want to take a moment and commend Wendy. One of the things that Wendy and I talk about regularly is the importance of nutrition in education. Kids need to be well-nourished in order to be able to learn, and if they're hungry, if their energy level is low, it's going to affect their education. And so Wendy has been very thoughtful about the menus that she's put together and, and the strategies to make sure everybody can get through the line. And Wendy's, you know, has done some amazing work with the largest food service operation outside of the city of Syracuse. And, and I'm just really proud of Wendy, I'm proud of the team. And yeah, remember, we got the announcement that we were closing down on the 16th, and on the 17th in that morning, and bright, not, not even bright and early, dark and early, Wendy was there with her team, shifting the whole operation to a grab-and-go meal operation. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to just recognize her publicly for the hard work she's done for our students.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Wendy. Thank you and your staff.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, Wendy. So we have this program in three of our schools, along with our Bosse's program at Thompson Road. Any chance of extending it, or don't other schools qualify for that program?
That is a great question. I talked with Mr. Keegan about this a number of times this year. We were working diligently to have Smith Road fall under the CEP umbrella, and they are just at 40%. They're at 40.14%, I believe. And Allen Road is at 39.8%, I believe. So we were really, we went through every single kid in that district or in that building and looked them up by hand in this website, trying to have those numbers grow. The only problem with rolling them into the CEP program right now is that would draw down our, our free and paid rates. So for example, that 81% of free meals that we're receiving right now would have dropped into the low 70s. So to be honest with you, I think with our economic climate right now, and so many people, unfortunately, without jobs, that in the fall, we'll be able to make those numbers grow, and we'll be able to slide, hopefully, a couple of those into the program.
Okay. My other question, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, we're just not quite there yet, but we're watching it closely.
Okay, so possibly next year, that'd be great. My other question is, Wendy, I know there was a change in nutritional rules, and I'm sure that helped you, like, you know, you didn't have to do whole-grain pizza dough. Has that helped, the new rules, since last year?
Well, I will tell you what, our kids have been very accepting, these kids that are eating these whole grains now have been eating whole grains since kindergarten, basically. We've been in this process long enough that we did make a lot of modifications. We were allowed to offer 1% chocolate milk instead of skim, but our students are used to the skim milk, and our dietitian felt that was a better choice for them. And the only major switch that we made when it came to wheat, which was such a problem years ago when I was talking to you guys, is that we went back to a white saltine cracker. Wheat saltine crackers are terrible, and we, we did switch some of our wheat pastas back to white. And that did seem to help a little. But the kids, we use a white wheat now, and the kids can't even tell they're eating whole grain.
Oh, wow. That's awesome.
Wendy, don't you think that our manufacturers also have gotten a little better at manufacturing the foods that meet these standards?
Oh, so much better. I think when I came to you guys in like the year 13, 14, and I was, you know, our, our meal counts were horrific, the products were just not there, there wasn't a variety, and they, I mean, talk about a wheat roll, it was dark brown and scary, and it was pretty dry. The rolls these days are pretty good.
I just wanted to tell the rest of my peers, is that you don't just work for North Syracuse. It's amazing what you do, but you are working with many other school districts through our OC and Bosse's. And I will be mentioning this on Thursday night, but through the month of May, you look at the screen right now, 58,000, 59,000, Wendy, 651,790 breakfasts and lunch. So North Syracuse isn't the only one. Your team has been amazing through this COVID. I, and everybody's happy. When I go by, walking in Allen Road, they say hi to me, and they're cheering, and the parents are coming in and so forth. So Wendy, please, thanks for everything you did. It's amazing, very amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're, we are continuing to serve meals. We started our summer program today. We had about 150 parents or students show up to grab meals today, so hopefully, that number will grow throughout the summer.
Hey, Wendy, can you just, can you just share with them what you shared with me about some of our parents that are traveling a distance to get to the program?
Oh, so for, for example, today, we had my cook, Debby Borza, who has been with us since, I think she's been in the district since 1987. She always runs the summer program, and she said that she was talking to a few parents, and they were driving down from upwards Cicero-Lakeshore area to grab meals today, and obviously, that's a long drive. By the time you drive down here to grab free meals, you've burned up that much money and gas to feed your child. So like we have for COVID, we are trying to hand out multiple days at once, if need be, to save some money for the parents.
Nice.
So I just need you guys at some point tonight to approve or vote on that, that increase, if, you know, if you have any other questions about that, I'd be happy to answer those.
We're going to go to print calendars as soon as you guys.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, so literally, people are at our doorstep waiting for this information.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy, for spending this time with us.
Well, thank you so much for having me. Have a good night.
Yeah, good night.
Okay, we are at the Board of Education Committee reports. I don't know if we have any, but I will throw it out there to Ms. Galen, Mr., okay, I see Mr. Crabtree not shaking his head. So I will move this, no, okay, I'll move to superintendent's comments then. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, Bob, there was, there was not an OC M.
Yes, there was.
There was a report. Did you have comments on it? Because I forgot.
Yeah, I've got a few things to say tonight. I'll tell Connie that our, my next report will not be to August 24th. What I'm going to do is combine July and August, so you won't need to hear a report to me, from me. But I want to say a couple of things, because a lot's been happening at Bosse's. Number one, at our June meeting, we honored our retirees at an awesome virtual celebration that was organized by our super deputy superintendent, Colleen Vigiano. We were able to see them, hear them, and hear something from each of their administrators. I want to tell you that Mike Murphy, representative from Liverpool School District, has been on Bosse's since 2007, and he is leaving us, and he has added a lot during his 13 years. I wanted to share that information with you. The new representative from Liverpool will be Christopher Hockey, and he'll represent Liverpool. On Thursday of this week, we will approve, Don will be working with this gentleman, Phil Groom, as our new Assistant Superintendent for Administration, replacing Andrew de Blasio. So he'll be meeting with the business officials in each of the school districts. Dan was able to view what was called a Tools for Success Ceremony back in early June, and there was a special award given this year called Chefs from Above, because as you all know, two lives, well, there were more than, I think, but two lives were taken at a restaurant close to our, well, where we are, our school district. And the mother of one of those chefs is a minister, or is an instructor in Bosse's, and so they gave a monetary award and scholarship. And it was a high honor, as, as Dan knows, that the recipient was a CNS student, Tyler Howland, in the culinary program, and he received many things, including some money. Also, we're at Bosse's looking, and this will affect North Syracuse, and Dan and Don will be hearing more about this, is that we're getting an energy performance contract with Johnson Controls, and we will show the districts the cost for each of them and the savings. But I wanted to end up with, all of us know we had North Syracuse graduates, well, Bosse's had eight graduations, all done virtually, and in Bosse's, we had 651 graduates from all our programs. But we, as a board and as a district, should be proud of the kids that live in our district and graduated from these programs. In our innovation programs, we had 11 North Syracuse students. Amazing. Our special, these are students that are in our programs up to the, up to 21, and they wouldn't be in school if it wasn't for our program that you support. There were seven graduates, and then in the career technology, there was some degradates. So we had a total of 88 North Syracuse graduates from our Bosse's programs, and we, as North Syracuse School Board and Administrator, should be very happy of that. So that's my report. You won't hear it from me now until the end of August. Thank you.
Mr. Crabtree, I did have one question, and maybe I was reading the reporting correctly. Are you using a different DS for your continued superintendent search?
Yes. Were you sitting, now you would put me on the spot.
Well, that's, you're using one from a different Bosse, so I noticed.
Yes, from up, it's a different consultant from the Jefferson Bosse's up in the Watertown area, and he's doing a great job. And the applications are due next week, and the interviews should be coming up the end of July.
I wish you luck with that. I hope you have better luck than you've had, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Okay. We've made comments in the Friday letter, but I just want to recap. Graduation was definitely a different ballgame than, than we've had in the past, but I want to comment as far as Mr. Leclerc, Diane Clancy, Anne Lorenzini, Sarah Keys, Jamie Sullivan, Matt Root. I mean, the team up at the high school really put together a special event for students and the parents. Parents probably were within, I don't know, 12 feet of the, of the stage to get some individual pictures. Students got to be up on stage. It was, it was special, and they got to be with their families in the car on, on the drive up, and the comments that I received via email and all over, people were just raving. So if you're on our website, there are some pictures that Lori Cook has put up there, but given the circumstances, the high school really did a nice job making it a special day. So I just want to give them a little bit of praise. Bob was sharing about OC and Bosse's graduates, because yes, looked at their virtual graduates, and I saw a lot of familiar faces. I believe when we did our visit to Bosse's earlier in the year, I had a student or two look me up, and I did have a few of them back when they were in kindergarten. And Bob, one of the students did give a speech for the Stars program. It was very touching, and that student is correct, they've overcome many hurdles, and I am, I'm proud to see her make it through. But all in all, the students that have come through Bosse's and our district really have endured a lot during this time and have really shown what kind of student they are in, in a class, and a credit to themselves, because they really endured and they've made it. I was going to mention that summer meal program started today, but Wendy beat me to it. And aside from that, we're dealing with the heat wave and looking at the heat index, because, as Mr. Keegan said, I think today was the first day of a camp that started. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Under Board comments, I just wanted to just take a quick moment to thank you, the Board, for putting your trust in me again and re-electing me, and Mr. Marizio as Vice President. I, we'll do our best, but I expect that we got some challenges in front of us that we can't even imagine still. So we're going to need to work together real hard this year, and, you know, having said that, I just wanted to... And, you know, having said that, I just wanted to, in this, in this time, because I don't know where else to discuss this, if there's anything, you know, I know we discussed meeting in person and we were close to that. So just, just my two thoughts, and I'm not looking for any answers today, something to think about. Is there anything, if we were to meet in person, that, any kind of modifications, accommodations, or anything that would make people comfortable enough to do that, please let me know, let Mike know. We can see what we can be done with a room arrangement, number one. Number two, I know we were continuing, working on trying to get the ability to do a hybrid. I don't know if we're there yet, but we discussed that where we'd be able to have a meeting where some people could be in person, some people could phone in or video in. So those are the two things we were working on. I say that because as much as this works, I think Zoom probably will have a function going forward. With the challenges I am afraid we will be seeing, I think it's going to be important to try and get back together as soon as we can. Just to get ourselves, you know, interacting the way I think we should. That's just, that's just me. So I wanted to say that. And any, any thoughts or comments? Fine, if not, we'll, we'll keep going here.
I, it has nothing to do with that, but I don't know if it's Chris or Dan. I think we need to revise our organizational chart, give us new copies of the organizational chart. I like to have a new copy of that. So I don't have to keep crossing out names.
Will do.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you. With that, if I could get a motion to put the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education on June fifteenth before us. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. If I get a motion to combine B and C, please. Motion from Ms. McDonald, second from Mr. Marizio. That is our special ed classifications for disabled students and for preschool disabled students. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And if I get a motion, but being part of this, that is a consideration of bid supplies. Motion from, anybody? I don't see any, Mr. Herman, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, favor? Opposed, and that is carried. Discussion action item A, we could put our revenue anticipation note resolution before us with a motion, please. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that is carried. And B, our vehicle bond resolution, which will be a roll call vote. Did I get a motion to put that before us? A motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? Okay, any roll call?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Gary Kruger.
Aye.
Erin McDonald.
She's muted. Erin? You're muted, you're muted still.
Aye, sorry about that, guys.
That's okay. Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is carried. Okay. Okay, we have some reauthorizations that, I'm sorry, no, we have item C. Recommendation to create a one point oh full-time equivalent teacher on special assignment. The RTI LA coordinator, if I get a motion to put that before us. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that is carried. And we have a series of reauthorizations, D through H and I is an authorization into a contract. But D through I as a group, if I get a motion to do that. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. And D is, these are all reauthorizations. You can see with the Village and with NAVAC as well as YMCA. State of New York Transportation and our resolution for an authorization is a three-year service contract with OCMBOSSE's for high-speed communication services. So those are those items. Any question on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, those are carried. Item J is acknowledgment of gift. If I could, a motion to put that before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Again, this is from the NSEF, which we're always thankful for. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And a motion, but care, surplus of marketable and non-marketable goods. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion?
Yes. And of course, I'm sure Mr. Keegan. What's the difference between marketable and non-marketable? What, what's the difference here?
Well, so we, when we, when we put something out as marketable, we believe we can auction it off or sell it. For example, there are some textbooks and things like that, that sometimes we can get a textbook provider to look at. And in, in those cases, sometimes we'll come to you and call it marketable, we'll check the market afterwards. And if, sometimes it turns out it's not in fact marketable. So, but that's the difference is. And the non-marketable stuff really just goes to either a recycler or is thrown away. I would, I would tell you that normally I comment on these things and have some level of familiarity. Dan has led a crazy, crazy cleaning effort at the district office. I felt like I was home with my wife. And having, seriously, Dan went through our gym and through that building like crazy and really shook it up and asked some tough questions of people. And I think, Dan, if I'm not mistaken, you're the father of this lease list.
Well, thank you, Don. One of the things that we, we tend to hoard a lot of things in the district. And there were things that were still in our gym that I know I purchased back probably fifteen years ago. There was a summer program at Roxelle and there was certain summer, summers, things for ELA and math that are just not relevant right now. So I asked each director to go through, basically audit all of their materials. And then we basically held them to it and we, we checked on them. We got lists. We're having Karen Beck look to have vendors come in to see what's marketable, what's not. If we can get money for it, we want to. We've also looked at our technology and asked technology to go through. And there were some things that we, we had parts for that we don't even have the machines. So.
So one, so I want to talk a little bit about this. I hate to be picky on this. First of all, Mr. Stone, I can't read it. It needs to be typed or the list. But what I saw, and I'm glad Don explained it, being a math person, I saw on marketable, there are a lot of manipulatives. Listen, manipulatives, they can't be that old. They can be used, pattern blocks and so forth. And then the other thing is big books. Oh my God, as a teacher, I would love to have as many big books. So are these things allowed by our staff to look at? I mean, if I was a teacher, I'd be right in there with the manipulatives and, and big books. So does staff ever get a chance that, that want it?
Yes, they do. In fact, I know John Rice even had some of the big books and I had people at Main Street come over and take a look. Manipulatives. We've had almost like a garage sale, especially new teachers coming over and go through the bins of manipulative. So we do that, especially with new people coming in, so they can build up their repertoire in their classroom.
So these are things that people don't want. Okay, that, you answered my question, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that? Hey, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Like to recognize filing retirements. Elaine Ornsby, our ADAPAP counselor, retiring with twenty six years of service. James Smith, math teacher, retiring with thirty two years of service. Patricia Gilberti, bus driver, retiring with twenty years of service. And Deborah Yurton Sprinker retires with thirty point eight years of service. So we thank them and wish them luck in retirement. Instructional report A, if I get a motion to place that before us. Motion from Ms. McDonald, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion on instructional report A?
I just want to talk about two of the retirees because I know them. Elaine Ornsby started in our school district as an ADAPAP that worked with my classroom at Bear Road. Dynamic, relates well with students. And she made a decision to go to the middle school. And I was so happy she went to it because at that time, we didn't have a strong program in the middle school and those kids needed her. She also became teacher of the year. She's one of our teacher of the years. We are losing somebody of very big value to our students. Mr. Smith, thirty two years at, you know, I don't know, it was all at CNS. But, and again, he's not retiring, thank goodness, to January. But some of the young people that I worked with at the high school had him as a teacher. He went beyond his classroom, as many of our teachers do, extra classes. He didn't get payment for them. He would work with the students the day of the regents, a week before the regents. So we are losing two valuable people and I just want the other board members to know that, you know, we have valued people that we're losing. So I just wanted to say that.
Any other comments on instructional report A? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. Instructor, Support Staff Personnel Report B, if I get a motion to put that before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that is carried. And a motion, please, but Administrative Personnel Report C before us. Motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. At this time, I, I'll make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with the Teacher, Aid, Teachers Food Service and Teachers Bargaining Unit and to review the employment record of two individuals with no action to follow. Can I get a second? Second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And can I get a motion for adjournment, please? Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned. I will meet you at the next link.